This meeting to order, this is the independent school district number eight three two, our regular board meeting. On Thursday, February twenty fifth at seven oh two P M. Due to the current guidance about limiting person to person contact through social distancing due to the global covid nineteen pandemic. This meeting of the Montomay School Board is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota statute thirteen D zero twenty one. Meetings by telephone or other electronic means. School board members are reminded to mute their microphones when they are not speaking. And not to be on electronic devices during the meeting. Staff presenting should keep their cameras off until their presentation begins. School board members wishing to speak should raise their hand then wait to be recognized by the chair. When recognized, the board member should unmute their microphone, speak, and then mute their advice again. All votes will be conducted by roll call vote, and each school board member should wait until their name is called before voting. This meeting is being recorded and access to the meeting will be made available on the school district's website as soon as reasonably possible. So with that, we are called to order, and I'm looking for roll call of attendance. Julie.
Okay, Kevin Donovan.
You're.
Julie McGraw here. Kelly Regan.
Here.
Stacy Stout. Tony Visuny.
Here.
And Lucy Payne.
Here.
And Ismael.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Next, we have the approval of the agenda. Looking for a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Kevin. Moved by Kevin, second by Stacy. Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Kevin Donovan.
Aye.
And Julie McGraw, aye. Kelly Regan.
Aye.
Stacy Stout.
Aye.
Tony Visuny.
Aye.
And Lucy Payne.
Aye, motion carries. I did forget to mention at the beginning, we did not have any public comment come through our electronic. Email form on our website, so there was no public comment for this evening. Next, we have the approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Julie.
Second.
Moved by Julie, second by Tony. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Kevin Donovan.
Aye.
Julie McGraw, aye. Kelly Regan.
Aye.
Stacy Stout.
Aye.
Tony Visuny.
Aye.
And Lucy Payne.
There's a motion carries. Thank you, Julie. Next on the agenda, we have presentations and recognitions. We don't have any staff or. Community or student recognition tonight, so we'll go to the spotlight on Wildwood Elementary School. Wish I have Scott Brisky with us.
Oops, wrong button. There we go. Alright, are we good? Can you guys all see it?
Yep, we can see it. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Lucy. Alright, good evening, everyone. I'm gonna take a few minutes and shine a spotlight on building relationships and belonging as part of our strategic. Plan here at Wildwood. With all the mitigation strategies that our staff and students have had to put in place of covid. We wanted to be sure that we continue to learn about each other both in and outside of our building. In a normal school year, we have assemblies, we have large group activities that help us build community, but with covid, we had to find. Unique ways, and I want to talk about a couple of those ways that we that we did that. So I'll start with our mission. Our mission at Wildwood is to become the joyful Zephyr family dedicated to building the foundational pathway. Of learner agency and personal excellence. And what I'm gonna pull out tonight is. As part of our mission, it's to build a community of learners based on authentic relationships, a sense of belonging, collaboration, and trust. We feel that it is essential to get to know each other in order to build that sense of belonging. Learning about each other is a crucial element to build that learner agency. If we know things about each other, that can create discussions. The relationship will foster, the trust will grow, and students will start building that foundational pathway through relationships. So at Wildwood, we're really intentional about exploring students' hopes and dreams. Highlighting their attributes through very important person presentations and creating a community. That starts each day with a morning meeting and thus building that sense of belonging. So, as a whole school, we started doing what's called a connection wall in our cafeteria by the front door. With a new theme each month. So how the connection wall works is each month. We have an opportunity for staff and students, including our distance learning students, to highlight a piece of their lives that others may not know about. The connection wall has created a space for students and staff to stop by and have these just amazing conversations that surprisingly go deeper into the classroom. We started with our veterans, thank you all, and then the number of conversations that we heard about once. Dad or mom or aunt or uncle or grandparents was was amazing. Students naturally started to share stories about the veterans and their lives, and then they started making connections with others. So I want to take a few minutes and show you a video of our connection wall that we did in November when we were highlighting thanking veterans. Hi, I'm Scott Brisky, principal of Wildwood Elementary, and as a veteran myself, I thought it was really important. That we honor the men and women who have served our awesome country. So, we decided to do a thank you veterans wall. And as you can see, we have a lot of veterans here at Wildwood. What we asked the students to do was to bring in a picture. Of somebody who have served in the armed forces. And this is really awesome. A really cool byproduct of what happened. Was that not only did they bring in the pictures, but they started having conversations and telling stories. About the person that was in the pictures, and that created community, and that created. A vision of things that were happening outside of Wildwood, which was just really, really awesome. One thing we concentrate on a lot here at Wildwood is family, and this shows that our family reaches outside of our walls.
My name is Millie, and what a veteran is, is a person who has courage. Is brave and who serves our country.
Hi, my name is Millie, and this is my great grandpa Eugene. And while he was in the Korean War, a post office worker.
Hi, my name is Carson, and this is my great grandfather. He was in the army.
Navy, he was mostly on ships and he fixed like all the electronics that they had.
Hi, my name is Mira, and this is my bumpa. He served in the Navy as an air traffic controller. And he lives in Crest Lake.
Hi, my name is Paisley, and this is my mom. She served the military and she went on a really long trip.
Hi, my name is Betty, and this is my dad, and he used to be in the army.
Hi, my name is Ben, and this is my granddad. He was in the Air Force and he. Um, he was in, he was the radio guy because they were just shooting planes and then he accidentally got shot by a plane. And then, um, so my granddad was in the Air Force. He was in the Air Force and then, and then he was the radio guy.
Um, my name is Paul Cole, and this is my Will. This is my picture of Will and. He is in the army at the farm and he's, and we phoned call him and he said I could see the big. Big tanks and missiles.
Hello, this is my grandpa. He's a veteran.
I'm Mrs. Warren, and I wanted to share my connection with some military folks. This picture right here is my grandfather, whose birthday is this January. He'll be a hundred and three. In January, and he is in March going to be a great, great. Grandfather to my daughter Ally. And this is my nephew Jonathan Warren. Who is an Army Ranger and has been in the military now for just a few years. He lives in Tennessee. So I don't get to see him very often, but I'm very, very proud of the work that he's doing for our country.
Hi, my name is Samantha, and my dad used to fly in the military, but not anymore, and he used to fly two planes.
Happy Veterans Day. Thank you for your service.
Alright, so our connection wall will be live through the end of the school year this February. We, we did pair appreciation. We honored all of our hard and amazing par professionals that work with our students every. Every day. In March, we're going to do I Love to Read where students can share a picture of a creative place that they like to read. So that should get interesting. In April, we're gonna have staff as elementary students. So we're gonna have staff bring pictures of themselves. When they were in elementary school. That should create some interesting conversation. And in May, we're going to do favorite pet. Students will bring in photos of their favorite pet, or if they don't have a pet, what they would like their favorite pet to be. And finally, in order to build relationships with our new kindergarten families, we converted our open house and registration process to a virtual experience. Normally, we have family members come in, they get to see our classrooms, they get to meet our kindergarten teachers. And they get, they get a great overview of our kindergarten program, but this year they weren't able to come in, so. We had to adapt, but families were able to access all that information and watch many videos with teachers. Take a classroom tour, get a book read by one of our kindergarten teachers and, and kind of see what that would look like. Even though that they weren't able to come into the building. And then on February fourth, our incoming kindergarten families attended our first. Zephyr kindergarten connection Zoom event where families, we did an overview of everything that they can kind of expect in kindergarten. And then families got to meet the teachers and ask, ask questions and get those questions answered in smaller breakout rooms. So, and that's it. That's, that's our spotlight.
Questions or comments from board members? Stacy, go ahead, and then we'll go to Kevin and then Kelly.
I'll, I'll be quick. I just wanted to say it was all very impressive. I've really loved the video of the veterans. Wall and want to say thank you for your service to Scott.
Thank you.
Yeah, very, very impressive, and I love the way the bringing people together. I mean, to, to me, that is really such a. It was so amply evident in listening to the story, so thank you for that work, Scott and team.
Thanks, Kevin.
And Scott, I just also wanted to echo what everyone said. I also watched the open house video, and I thought it was very well done. I thought you gave a really good picture to families who couldn't visit there in person, virtually of what was happening at Wildwood. I thought it was well done.
Yeah, thanks. We, I think we did give a pretty good overview of what kindergarten experience was like and, yeah. Huge props to Alice for that too. She did a ton of work on that, so, yeah, thank you.
So Scott, I really appreciate the way you're focusing on relationships and connections, because we know those are very important in terms of thinking about student mental health. And even with our current situation of having some kids distance and some face to face, you found a way to include our distance learners. Which is not easy during this time, so I really appreciate the time you took to think about that and make sure those students had a way to contribute. And then the video allows them to actually see that full wall as well. So that was really good thinking. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lucy.
I'd also thank you for the veterans wall. It was really touching and a creative way to bring everyone together. Thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
So Scott, do you think you'll continue, continue this way of connecting next year? Is it something that now becomes part of the culture of the school?
Yeah, I think so. It's, it's, it's an easy thing to do. It doesn't take a lot of time, and it's really. The kids use it. They look at it, they talk about it. Like I said, it carries over into the classroom. So, yeah, I think we're gonna, our PBIS committee is getting together. Monthly, and we're having conversations about whether we're gonna continue it, but I don't see any reason why not. It works really well, and it's an easy thing to do, so. Absolutely.
Great, thank you. Tony, go ahead.
Scott, I'll, I'll reiterate all the great comments from the other board members. Great work. I was curious, looking forward. I know that kindergarten registration is a big event, but are you looking to keep some of the online tools just so. Access to families that might not be able to make it, because I know timing's always hard for families.
Yeah, absolutely. It's on our website now, and so, I mean, I, I don't see it going away. But yeah, it's a, it's a great resource, and now that we did it, it's on there, and yeah, I, we plan on keeping it.
So thank you so much for sharing with us, Scott, tonight. I appreciate the fact that you're gonna keep doing some, some of these things, as the lieutenant governor keeps saying, we're gonna come back better. And this is one of those examples of coming back better that we've had to shift and do some things differently this year, but it's gonna make us better in future years in terms of those connections and those relationships, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Comments? Alright, next on the agenda, we have a report from our student representative, Ismael.
Thank you. So my student report for the month of February. For Wildwood and O H Anderson, there was not really a lot of events going on. However, in the middle school, on February fourth. They had a fall slash winter concert. So in the high school. At this past month of February was Black History Month, and S L C made sure that the high school was well equipped with resources to better educate themselves. On black history. We had over fifty teachers, staff, and faculty members. Research prominent black people in their respective fields, and then we made a poster for each. Member of staff who signed up. In addition to the poster, S L C made a fun school-wide Kahoot to further educate the high school students with. A bit of fun. On base, building equity surrounding, building equity, sorry, base. Every week has come up with resources for the community as a whole to watch or to read. Every week, every week, there was a different purpose. The main focus of the weeks in February were, was black women. For, and then ages over twenty five, so ages twenty five and under, issues gone unseen in the black LGBTQ plus community. And that is my student report.
Thank you. Any questions from board members? Go ahead, Tony.
Ismael, I, I was lucky enough to get a tour of the high school and did see all the posters for Black History Month and thought that was a excellent idea to connect the curriculum. For those teachers and everything. So that was for all the students who participated and the staff that participated in that, I thought it was a really nice touch to help. Bring home Black History Month in the school, so thank you.
Thank you.
I really love the fact it came from the students, that they were selecting the people they were interested in tied to the content areas, and so I think that's really impressive. Our students are taking that leadership role. Alright, thank you, Ismael. Next, we have some discussion information items, starting with the board member calendar. The board member calendar is in the board packet. Are there any events people like to call out or discuss? I will announce that you'll notice on the calendar, the March fourth study session has been canceled. We will not need that time, and so there will not be a meeting on March fourth. We have a spring break coming up. I hope all of our families and community members stay safe to keep our schools open during the spring break. Any other events? Not a lot going on. Next, we have the first reading of some policies, Barb.
There we go. Okay, so this, so these policies were all reviewed by the policy committee. And some of the policies we're talking about are ones that we review annually, some are on a six-year cycle. And some came through as recommended changes for, from the school boards association. So what I'd like to do, because we're, you know, in the interest of time, because these have been reviewed by the policy committee already. I'm going to just kind of summarize the changes, and if you have specific questions, then we can pull them up and, and talk about them. But again, these have been. Reviewed already by the policy committee. So the first ones are the policies on the six-year cycle review with minor or nor, no changes. So you have a policy, the first policy, one oh one, legal status of the school district. That one just adds a reference to policy seven oh four, so that there's a cross-reference that's highlighted there. And I'll just say, the reason we take the time to add those into policies is so that when, if there was a reason to review one of our policies. And we want to make changes, we want to be able to reference the other ones that might be affected by those changes. And so I'll just say that that's. Adding that reference on policy one oh one. Then, the only other of these policies, the only other one that had changes was policy five twenty eight. And that is simply some updated language to be consistent with a policy we just adopted in the fall policy five twenty two. Which is the Title IX policy. Otherwise, there are no other changes in those policies that are listed under number one, letters A through F. Are there questions? Okay, then I'm just gonna, oh, Kelly.
I have a question. I was doing some reading on them. I'm just gonna use my newness as an, as a reason for asking a question on this. Can I ask a question specifically on one of the policy changes that I noticed?
Yeah, which policy are we talking, what?
Looking at the one on six oh one, I don't know if you've got, not gotten there yet.
Oh, I'm not there yet.
Not there, okay.
Yep, that's great. I, I'm coming up on that one. I may, I may be able to answer that for you. Okay, um, so the first ones I'm just talking about are those ones with minor or no changes.
So I'm gonna jump in real quick, Barb. For the new board members, this is, on that first reading, it's exactly what Kelly's gonna do. It's our opportunity to ask questions and gather additional information. Before we make a decision on them, so we're not having any action tonight. And so Kelly, your questions will, are right in line, but I just want to make sure. Tony and Kelly understood that, that this is our time to ask those questions. So if there's additional information that needs to come back to us, Barb has time to do that.
Yep. Okay, so the next one are policies with recommended changes. So I'm just gonna go through each of those. So the first one, policy two thirteen. This was to update it with our current practice. And without having it in front of me, I believe this one had. We eliminated one of the school board committees that we no longer have, and the other one has to do with how you provide your summaries of committee. Meetings in our board. It said that you provide something written, but what you've been doing is providing an update in person. So that's the change there. Policy for, oh, and I'm sorry, do you have questions? Sorry. Policy four nineteen is the tobacco-free environment. There are some, there are some updates. Now, we've updated this. A few times, actually, since I've been here. I want to say this might be my third time updating it, and it has to do with updated language around. Around vape, vaping devices, tobacco devices, I guess I'll call them. So there, there are some updates to that. There are also some updates, including the reference to a statute around vaping awareness and prevention education. And that is included in our health curriculum. So we are, it is in line with our practice, but it is to update the language. There. Any questions? Okay.
I'm happy to see that update. Thank you.
I wouldn't be surprised if we updated again next year with updated language, because it just keeps, the more we learn. Yep. Policy five sixteen, student medication. We went through this one in depth in the policy committee, I will say. We kind of line by line with our. Licensed school nurse, Megan McMahon. It, it did require some updates to align MSBA policy. And in a lot of it was current practice anyway, but the language in our policy was outdated. Our practices weren't, but the policy was. And so there was quite a bit, and so on this one, I'm just going to say that if you do have questions, I'm happy to take them down and. Ask Megan to come back, because she did go through very thoroughly. Were there questions on this one?
I want to point out, this one's interesting too, because we do have some procedures in this policy, which we try not to do, but they're important procedures for transparency with the medications. So it's a little bit different than some of our other policies.
Policy six oh one had a couple of different changes. The first one. Was in, there was a time when this policy read that the world's best workforce was the strategic plan. I want to say the world's. That every school board had to adopt the world's best workforces as the strategic plan, and that language. Has changed, been updated, that they don't equate world's best workforce with strategic plan, so that's, that's that update. The other one has to do with our reporting procedures related to statute on our dyslexia screening. And it's a required report that we provide the M D E every year. And so it's update that it is aligned with our practice, but it needed to be updated to, to reflect the statute. Do you still have a question about that one, Kelly?
I do. So when I was reading through that, I, my curiosity was arisen when I was reading through about the screening tools that were used. Being a mom of four boys, and I had not heard of this, I was curious as to who gets screened, how, what, you know, and who gets screened? Like, how is that identified? And then, you know, also would be, what would be the curriculum or supports that we have for students who are dyslexic in the district? Like, what is that curriculum? And again, I'm looking for just, I don't really understand or know what we offer, and so I'm just kind of looking for what resources we have for students with dyslexia. And how that identification process happens.
Okay, I can ask Lynn to go over that with us. She has, I think she's done that. But it has been a couple of years, maybe since she did that presentation for the board, so I'll ask her to do an update.
Thanks so much.
And you should be living soon, and send some updates for the board in the past as well, the reading specialists at Wildwood.
Okay. I'll ask, I'll, I'll talk to, to them about coming back with that for you. Alright. And then policy six oh seven, organization of grade levels is simply that the district may require verification of age when placing in. Entering school, so, and it just gives some detail to that. Any questions? Okay. And if you think of questions later, just let me know so that we can come back with those for the next reading. Okay, thank you.
So these will be read two more times. The next reading, Barb will bring back the information we've asked for, and then. It gives the public another opportunity if they have comments on them, and then at the third reading, we'll actually take action on that, those two sets of policies. Next on the agenda, we have action items, starting with the approval of donations and grants totaling eleven thousand nine hundred eighty-two dollars and fifty-four cents.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Kevin, second by Julie. Any discussion on the donations? I'd like to thank the donors and the grants, as they are greatly appreciated, and these funds will be used. To further the mission of the school district and use towards the wishes of the donors. So with that, if we could do a roll call vote for the acceptance of the grants.
Kevin Donovan.
Aye.
Julie McGraw, aye. Kelly Regan.
Aye.
Stacy Stout.
Aye.
Tony Visuny.
Aye.
And Lucy Payne.
The chair's aye, motion carries. Next, we have the approval of the annual compliance and the agreement of the American Indian Parents Advisory Council to issue a vote of concurrence. So we have Ally Middlebrook and Jordan Hawkinson joining us.
Yes, hello, everyone. I'm gonna share my screen, and then we'll get started. Okay. Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Ally Middlebrook. I'm the district-wide social worker and coordinator of the Achievement and Integration Plan for the district. I'm also the district representative for the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, also called the A-PAC. And I am here tonight with the A-PAC Chairperson, Jordan Hawkinson, to present on the annual compliance vote of the A-PAC. And I will hand it over to Jordan.
Okay, I am Jordan Hawkinson. I am parent committee member. The A-PAC has decided to issue a vote of concurrence, meaning that we have no recommendations regarding the learning needs of our Native American students for the school board at this time. This compliance is done annually, and the A-PAC will have an opportunity each year to decide whether or not to provide recommendations to the school board. The A-PAC will continue to work hard on meeting the needs of Native American learners in our district and will seek support and partnership from the school board and district staff as needed. We're voting due to the newness of our program, and that is why. And we're hoping that we can provide opportunities for the students of our community to learn more about their cultures and share their culture.
Yes, thank you, Jordan. So there, there's a form for the A-PAC Chairperson, Jordan, and then the superintendent and the school board chairperson to sign. I've given that to Laura, and then I will submit that to the Minnesota Department of Education next week, giving our, the A-PAC's annual compliance vote. And before we finish there, I just wanted, because the A-PAC is new this year, I felt like you all would probably appreciate a brief update on how the formation of the A-PAC has been going this year. We have met twice this year so far and plan to meet again in April. I will say participation has been low, but that is expected when forming a new A-PAC. I have been warned about that from all of my mentors in the A-PAC world. They say it's, it's slow-going, and that's normal, and that's okay. It takes a couple of years. And Jordan and I, we are just, keep on going with our outreach efforts. We continue to keep all the other parents of our, all the other identified parents of our Native American students updated on what the A-PAC is doing, just to try to drum up that energy and excitement. And hopefully someday, we'll get some more of them who want to join us. And then our current goals that Jordan and I are working in the A-PAC, we're including a 506 form, which is a federal form, in registration packets for next year. So this form will actually be required if we ever apply for federal funding through the Office of Indian Education. We're not quite at that point yet where we're applying for that federal funding. However, if we ever do, we will need this form filled out by all families who identify as Native American, and it only has to be filled out once. It doesn't have to be filled out every year. So it is helpful, I was advised that it's helpful to start collecting those even before we start applying for federal funding. And another benefit to having this 506 form is it will help us in our identification efforts of Native, Native American students. And then, once we identify our Native American students, we can reach out to their parents and invite them to participate in the A-PAC. We're also going to work this spring on developing a webpage on our district website specifically for the A-PAC, so that there's a more clear way for families to find information about it. And then, like I said, we'll continue with our outreach efforts and continue to build up the A-PAC and to create that sense of community for our Native American families within the committee. And that is it, unless Jordan has anything else to share, otherwise, if anyone has any questions.
May I jump in and just give some context? Because this is our first time, this is our first time having A-PAC in our district. And so that's, it's really exciting, and I'm really thankful for all your work that you've been doing, Jordan and Ally, to, to get this up and starting, started. So as a district, we, we, we were identified as having, or we have, we have at least 10 students who identify as Native American. Am I, am I correct, Ally? Do you know that we had, how many we have at this time?
We, yes, we've identified 25 Native American students this year.
So, and so with that, then every, every district starts to, to form this parent, this family committee. The 506 form that Ally referred to as a federal form, those are for, for students who, who are either have a membership, a tribal membership, or their parents or grandparents. Is that correct?
Yep.
Have tribal membership. And so we may identify some of our students as, as Native American, and that the state may recognize, we need, you know, let's have this parent committee, but it may not also be the case that we have 25 students who have that tribal affiliation. So, so that's just another little part to this. And so I, so this is our first year of, of having that many students who identify. And so that's why it's a new committee for us. And it is true that it's gonna take a while to get started, but it's great. I appreciate what you've been doing. And I understand that Jordan went to at least 28 classrooms, is that right, to, to share at Wildwood? Could you highlight a few of the things that you've done?
Yeah, I've been able, fortunate to work with Julie Comfort in the STEM program at Wildwood. And we are presenting to all the classrooms. We're doing an outside classroom, so there's a bonfire. And each grade level, we've had a different theme. So kindergarten, we've been talking about circles. First grade is turtles, so we're talking about turtles and the moon. And then second grade, we're doing a little more engineering and talking about different things that the natives created and stuff, like snowshoeing, and then we built some teepees and stuff, and just passing the Dakota culture to them. And they learned a little bit about the name of Mata Mida, and Omato means bear in Dakota. So just passing on a little culture to the students. And I want to thank Julie Comfort for reaching out and allowing me this opportunity to come in. Thank you, Scott Brisky, too.
No, thank you. I, I was saying, so some of you, I'll say it while everyone else is listening too, that, that Jordan got some, some rave reviews over in Wild, at Wildwood. So we're really thankful that, that you went and worked with our students. So, so that's the background on why we have an A-PAC this year. And again, I'm really thankful for the work you've put in and, and keep going, because it'll be a great thing for all of our kids and families to, to connect to, to our district. So, so thank you.
I'm sorry, Ally, go ahead, and then we'll go to Kevin, if you want to respond to Barb's comment.
Oh, I was just saying, thank you.
Go ahead, Heather.
I, I just, this is, this is fun to see a new group start. And I know when, well, probably about four years ago, I was doing a little of this work as my role of the Minnesota School Boards Association President. And I did, I did some checking on where we were as a district. And it, I was told that we had five Native American students at the time. Now, it could be that we just didn't do as, I mean, I don't know how we identified. But anyway, it was, it's nice to see that this is going. I know White Bear Schools is doing a lot with this. I don't know if you've talked to Jordan Zuckerman over there at White Bear Schools, but she's a great resource. And again, when I was the MSBA guy, I got invited to go to Nashing School up in Mille Lacs, Man, on Jibway. And it's a federal school. And I was just, I spent the day up there, and I was just so privileged to learn about this tribal school, where the, the big thing is keeping the language alive, being taught by elders. And I brought Rob Pontius. He was the equity person at the time. And I called Rob up, and I said, hey, road trip. And so we both went up there, and it was great. And so I invited a number of staff from that school to come down and tour our fab lab at the time. And so it was a nice exchange. And so I do have a few resources still up there at the Nashing School. So anyway, it's gratifying to see this happen, so thank you.
Other comments or questions from board members? Go ahead, Tony.
I just want to thank you both for the, the work you're doing. And Jordan, becoming a Wildwood All-Star, I've heard rave reviews. So thank you for taking the time to share your culture up there. I, I know building connections and relationships, this is a big part of that, too. So great work, and kudos. Thank you.
Go ahead, Julie.
I just wanted to say that this is a great introduction, and I look forward to hearing more about this in the future. So thank both of you for the presentation.
Yes, thank you all so much. Appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you to everybody.
Yep. Also, Ally, know that you can reach out to me if you need a board member to attend a meeting. We would be glad to attend if there's something you need from us. If not, we're very happy that you're doing the work that you're doing. But if you need us for anything, please reach out.
I will. Thank you so much, Lucy.
Yep, good night. Next on our agenda, we have.
Nope. So we need your approval, we need.
I'm sorry, we need a motion. You're right. I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
I'm so excited about the learning model, right?
Yep, yep, I get it.
So moved on to the motion.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. So we'll get you in there, yeah, Stacy. Move by Tony, second by Kevin, to approve the annual compliance and the agreement with, of the American Indian Parent Advisory Council to issue a vote of concurrence. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please, Julie.
Kevin Donovan.
Aye.
Julie McGraw, aye. Kelly Regan.
Aye.
Stacy Stout.
Aye.
Tony Vasuni.
Aye.
And Lucy Payne.
The chair's aye, motion carries. Now, we're ready. We have a big audience for this presentation tonight. So I'm gonna turn it over to Barb for a secondary learning model.
Yeah, thank you. And I'm going to be joined by Principal Justin Hahn and Mike Newbeck. We'll share my, um, share my screen here. Okay. So this is our learning model update specifically regarding our secondary, our secondary school. So secondary school. So as an overview, what we're going to do is talk about this learning model change recommendation. We're going to share with you state guidance, our county COVID-19 data, school, community COVID-19 data, and the secondary recommendation. And then we're going to give you just some moving forward, some thoughts moving forward as, as we go into this next learning model change. So as a reminder, this has been our learning model change process from the beginning. We start with those indicators that reflect a model change. And, and those include MDH, MDE guidance, staffing, student attendance. And we have those listed there. The leadership team then takes that, those indicators and does an impact analysis. We bring that to the incident command team to provide feedback to the leadership team and the school board. And then we bring the learning model recommendation to you. We do have a transitional planning time before moving into a learning model change. So our indicators that inform learning model changes, state guidance from Minnesota Safe Learning Plan. We also look at the COVID-19 numbers, and those continue to inform learning model decisions for school districts as an indicator of risk and of predicted staffing impact. I'm gonna just take a moment here. COVID-19 numbers do still, are still part of the decision, in the county, sorry, our county numbers are still part of the decision-making process. I talked about this before, that they do, we have seen that as numbers rise, it does impact our staffing, or it has impacted our staffing. So we do use this as an indicator of risk. District and school COVID-19 numbers and quarantines, we, we do use those. And then we, we do work with our Washington County, and this is probably our most important part of the process, is really working with our Washington County Public Health to understand both the county and the school community data for learning model changes in order to give context to what we're seeing. And I'm going to talk about that a little bit, because I think it's worth spending some time to really understand the numbers and in the context around that. So we do have some new state requirements in our Safe Learning Plan. We, the beginning February 22nd, middle school and high schools will be able to choose to begin operating in hybrid or in-person learning model if they are able to implement the mitigation strategies, which just changed slightly. A rolling start is no longer required. You might recall that we talked a lot about that when we were moving into hybrid, but I was not able to bring, despite, despite all reason, we are not able to bring all our high school students back at the same time. Schools do, again, I'm gonna emphasize that we are going to rely on our COVID-19 transmission data and staff capacities when making the decision to transition. And we are going to continue, this is something we've, our nurses have always done and are, are very good at doing, but it'll be more, it'll be weighed more heavily in our conversations with public health regarding the influenza or COVID-like illness metric to determine whether or not our school should move to a more restrictive model. So mitigation strategies in the Safe Learning Plan. So, so one of the things that we are hearing more of is we're just really encouraging our students and families to take a COVID-19 test every two weeks. So we will be sending out, and we have, I think, already shared this information, but we'll continue to send out information so that students and families can find, we can't provide that testing, but we will, we will share testing sites and ways that families can test every two weeks. So at early learning in elementary schools, three feet of physical distancing is strongly recommended. For middle school and high schools, students must maintain six feet of physical distance whenever feasible. And when six feet cannot be met, a minimum of three feet of physical distance between students must be maintained. When county-level data declines to a level that, and this is, this is the same as it's always been, this information, if we, if we decline so that the range is between zero and 10 cases as a 14-day case rate, schools will not be required to meet any specific minimum amount of distance between students in a classroom setting. We also know that when staff are providing direct services that require close, physical and prolonged contact, like, so for example, our special education teachers who work in our center-based programming, those staff have, have recommendations for how to follow MDH's guidance, delivering direct student support services. We do have some new mealtime mitigation strategies and for middle school and high school that we do need to document lunchroom seating daily to, in order to support tracing in the event, contact tracing in the event of exposure. So that is something, something new. It is strongly recommended to have six feet of distance whenever possible. When it can't be, when it is not possible, schools must create as much space as possible for students. And then, as always, in, in this model, we will also be offering distance learning options for families. So although we are going to be talking about our in-person learning model today, we will still be offering distance learning for families. I know people are asking about vaccine. So statewide information, Governor Walz has shared that they expect to have the bulk of educators in Minnesota vaccinated with their first dose by March 8th. This week, I called the Department of Health, and I asked them, do we seem to be on track for this vaccinating the bulk of educators? And we, I, I heard very positive information about the supply of vaccines almost doubling this week. And they do feel like they are going to be on track to, to vaccinate. I do know that just yesterday, quite a few of our educators received appointments. However, I don't know how many. I can't tell you the percentage. When we were in charge of, as a district, recommending who, the priorities for who should get vaccinated first and sending our names of staff members into the state, we, we had a reason to know, and we had, so we could request that information. But now, we are not in charge of that. So we're, that's a, that's something that we are, are not going to be asking. However, just after, just this, shortly before I came into this meeting, I did get an email from MDE, and they and they are going to be surveying, sending me a survey for staff next week so that they can have a sense of how, how close they are to getting, they're meeting their goal by March 8th. So I do know that that's coming next week. Okay, so indicators that inform a secondary learning model change. So the state guidance supports returning secondary students to in-person learning. Our Washington County COVID-19 data is trending downward and I'm going to share that with you and talk to you a little bit about the context there that we've been provided from Washington County. We are not experiencing county or school community outbreaks in, and again, Washington County helped me with that and I'll tell you a little bit about that. Our instructional capacity is able to support returning to an in-person model and our COVID-19 protocols are able to support returning to an in-person model. So I want to share this with you. These are, this is our, and I'm sorry, I have to move, move some things around on my screen. These are our county numbers over time. And you'll recall that when I made the recommendation to move into distance learning, that was right around the end of October, beginning of November. And the recommendation at the time was that we needed to prepare to move into distance learning. That was the, that was what we heard from our regional support team. Recall that at that time, our numbers that were being reported were somewhere around, you know, 32, they're 28. But what we were hearing from our public health epidemiologist was he was seeing very concerning data regarding clusters in the community. And so while that number might look the same as what our number is now, the difference is that at that time, we were trending up. And at this time, we're trending down. So it's important to note that those numbers don't quite mean the same thing in the context we are right now. So what I learned in talking to our epidemiologist, again, I said, I asked, can you give us some, can you give me some understanding of what this means in terms of community spread? So it was shared with me that the one cluster that was being investigated when I was talking at the beginning of the week, that there was one fitness center cluster that they were looking into. There were no restaurants or bars that in our Washington County area that had a cluster outbreak. So as an example. It was shared with me that at the time that we were, you know, back in late October, early November, they were investigating up to 10 clusters per day to figure out contact tracing. And, and now at this time, it's more along the lines of one per week. So our context is very different in terms of the activity in the county. This is our current district dashboard that we will update. We update every Friday. Sometimes it takes us till Saturday based on the reporting. But you'll see that what we've been doing now is that we are reporting our data as a district-wide data. And we had been doing it by building. We were doing it by building when our numbers were rising. But because the numbers are as small as they are, and in order to prevent the identification of specific students and staff, we do, until our number, until, and if, if our numbers get higher, then we would consider going back to reporting by building to give families that information. But at this time, our numbers are not high in terms of positive cases. We also are really going to be tracking our staff quarantines because staff quarantines do impact our ability to run classes and do impact our operations. So at this time, I'm going to ask Dr. Newbeck and Mr. Han to talk about our learning model change recommendation.
Thank you, Barb. I just want to go over our changes as we go forward on our plan. So on March 15th and 16th, that's the Monday and Tuesday after spring break. What we would like to do is have a staff planning days on those days. It'll be very important for our staff. We will have many different practices and procedures happening as we have all students in our building. And so we'll need to have some time to work together as a staff to come up with some consistency to make sure that we know how to run our, have all those mitigations that will be safe for our students as we move forward. Also, we want to make sure that our, our staff has a chance to work together in teams to be able to decide and work on how they're going to do it as a team to make sure that the kids on their team are safe as they go through our building. And then we also need time for teachers to work together. Going from a 90-minute class period to a 45-minute class period will be a lot when it comes to pacing, when it comes to how much can they cover the homework? Everything else that comes with it. We also have to look at things in the future, like testing and all that. So we want to make sure that we are ready to go when kids come back full in person. On Wednesday, March 17th, we would have the blue cohort in school. And then the gold cohort cohort and the distance learning kids would be online at home. What we would be wanting to do is do mini lessons for when kids come back and just get them acclimated back again into our, into school from spring break and, and get them used to doing a six-period day. And then the next day, we would, the other part of the lesson, the other part of that hour would be for our teachers to work with kids on the things that we want them and be able to model the things that we want them to do when they're there. For example, what are the hallways going to look like? At the middle school, for example, we'll be using lockers, which we really haven't done yet this year. What's it going to be like going down to the lunchroom? What's it going to be like even coming in and out of classes? And what are those expectations when they have a classroom of 27 instead of just 14? On March 16th, the gold cohort and the blue cohort will flip and they will be in and will be doing the same type of thing with them on their day, kind of an orientation. And then on March 19th, that Friday, we would like all students to come into school on that day to kind of do that first run. Take what they talked about on Wednesday and Thursday as separate or half classes and put it together. And we did that on Friday because we want to be able to use what we learned those first few days to make some changes for staff and for students going into a five-day week the following week.
Oops, sorry. Here I come.
All right. Thank you, Barb, and good evening to everyone. I'm going to follow up on what Dr. Newbeck was just talking about as that transition for the week after spring break. So some of the things that you will see new in the schools and then what things will be staying the same. Students will attend school in person five days a week. So this is everything that's going to be new. The schedule will be shifting from that block, that three-period block scheduling to a six-period day. And then you're going to see the day will be extended by 15 minutes from 2:30 to 2:45. And Barb has spoken about these next couple of things with the reduced physical distancing requirements going from six feet down to three feet as being the requirement. And so thinking about how to restructure our rooms and also our seating at the lunch or during lunches. And then that's the next one, too, with the assigned lunchroom seating. So it's going to be very much like what we've been doing to help facilitate any contact tracing that would need to be done. Our assigned lunchrooms will, our seating in our lunchrooms will be assigned. And so that's going to be something that's new, too. And then middle school students will be using their lockers.
Could I, could I jump in and can you explain why we are talking about extending the, the day until 2:45?
Yes, absolutely. So when we, especially at the high school, when we start reducing or when we expand to six periods and we go down to 45-minute periods, it also reduces the amount of transition time between classes and between our lunches. And so for those safety things that have been mentioned already and the cleaning time, that becomes paramount. So we're going to be transitioning between classes in seven-minute periods or, sorry, for seven minutes instead of a regular five-minute during a normal year. So students will have seven minutes instead of that five minutes to transition from one class to another. And then also an increased amount of time in between lunches to eight minutes for that cleaning to take place.
Thank you.
Yep. And then the things that stay the same. So we just talked about the school day being extended by 15 minutes. And you'll see that the school day will still start at 9:00 AM for both the middle school and high school students. Staff and students will wear masks. We still are regulated and can have no large gatherings. We will still be following our COVID health and safety protocol. So the cleaning things, trying to distance as much as possible with that six feet in mind. But again, we have to be within that three feet. High school students will continue to use their backpacks. Middle school will continue to use the same locations for lunches. Middle school students enter and exit the building through assigned doors. Families may participate in family choice distance learning. And students who are in quarantine due to COVID-19 will continue to receive instruction via distance learning. And so again, that's still an option for families.
Oops, sorry.
Okay, so on those staff planning days and Dr. Newbeck did a nice job of, of already really describing the things that would be taking place on that Monday, March 15th and Tuesday, March 16th. But we're going to be utilizing that time over spring break to have our custodial staff move classroom furniture back into the classrooms. And so that has been in storage and will have to be moved back into the rooms. But again, those days are going to be used for just figuring out what that looks like in the spacing. I had the opportunity to go into a classroom this week and just get a sense of perspective and move desks into that classroom to see what the spacing would look like. And so teachers will also have to, because our rooms are different and, and there's, we have different configurations for desks as well. So teachers will be doing that as well on Monday and Tuesday. And then the bigger part of that, which Dr. Newbeck spoke to earlier, was really about that staff collaboration, learning and problem solving. So it's not just about just getting another two days to look and plan. We need to think about what that transition to a six-period day looks like. So the pacing of classes is going to change. We want to make sure we reiterate those procedures for the health and safety component. And also then with our students that are in distance learning, and now we're going to have more students in the classroom. It's that balance again between having students right there in front of us and also our students at home and figuring out different engagement tools and strategies to use. And again, that comes from that high level of collaboration that our staff has. And then our 100% of in-person learning classroom procedures with our distance learners as well.
Thank you. Okay, I'll just keep going and then at the end, if Justin and Mike, if you can stick around because there might be some specific questions for you. Okay, so moving forward. We, again, I've said this a couple of times, but I just can't help but reiterate. We do know from our experience that county COVID-19 outbreaks are reflected in our schools and do impact school staffing capacity. But we'll continue to partner with local public health experts and monitor those outbreaks in addition to using our school community data. But here is something that's really, it's, it's different in a lot of ways in the way that we're being guided to to use our, our data and that is to really look at those students and school staff who are absent and sent home with influenza or COVID-19-like illness. And when it reaches that 5% in a single week, schools should reach out and, and get support on navigating what that means for us. So. So I, well, I'll get to it later. I'll, I'll, I'll talk about it a little bit more later. So moving forward, staffing capacity is one of our indicators that informs a learning model change. So quarantines could impact our, our staffing capacity. At the start of the school year, we established a cautionary absence percentage zone for us to make, you know, to give us kind of an indicator of should we be thinking about a change in our learning model? And we talked about, we've ranged from 8 to 15% in our schools. And in, and in that November time, we were really feeling the pressure of being able to fill absences and we felt the pressure of the quarantines. So we do need to continue to build our instructional staff capacity with regard to making sure we have enough substitutes, ways that we can be flexible in how we support students and staff during that time to mitigate those closures. So health and safety protocols. We, we will continue our COVID-19 health and safety, safety protocols, including the additional daily and overnight cleaning. We do have staff saliva testing and we started that back when we went into distance learning. So back in November. We'll be continuing to do that every other week. We'll continue to publish our quarantine data on the district dashboard. Face shields are recommended but not required for staff to use with masks. We've talked about with our staff about maintaining a six-foot distance from students. I've mentioned this a few times that Ms. Prather from the principal at OH taught us the trick of putting tape on the floor to help teachers with that visual to remind them to, to maintain that six-foot distance. And when, when that's not possible, to wear extra layer of protection, whether it's face shields or double masking. And masks will continue to be required for students and staff. So we, so I, we want you to know, and it's important to know that there is a potential for larger group quarantine. So we have had minimal quarantines that are related to our buildings at the secondary level because of the six-foot physical distance that we can maintain with our students to this point. When we move to three-feet physical distance, if there is a student who tests positive, it would be within, you know, there'll be more students within that six-foot range that would need to be quarantined. Now again, our numbers are down, so it's not as though we have as many positive cases in our building. But if there were a positive case, we would want you to know that there's potential for larger group quarantines, which we talked about when we went to in-person for elementary. This is something that we talked about at that time. I want to reiterate the importance of continued reporting by families of COVID-19 cases in close contacts in order to minimize outbreaks and closures. So this is important and families who are listening at home and who watch this later, this is going to be really important for us. So again, in talking with our Washington County epidemiologist, I was learning about peer-reviewed studies regarding these, these strategies to, to prevent spread. And one of the ones that was shared with me was there's a study in the NFL and the strategy of that really quick response to a COVID-positive taste, case and and quarantine in close contacts is a really important strategy for mitigating the spread of COVID-19. So I am going to emphasize that again, how important that is to keep us in the loop. Because we do have a, we do have a plan for students who need to be quarantined. We do have the distance learning option and so students can access their learning during that quarantine. And it is super important to us that we know these things so that we can make sure that we can mitigate. That's a mitigation strategy that's really important in order to keep us open. And again, the other one we've talked about, we've talked about multiple times here, but again, there are a number of peer-reviewed studies that talk about the importance of these layered mitigation strategies. So washing hands, masking, social distancing, and that, that contact tracing, those together really do keep our students in person. So I'm going to please everything you can do to spread the word that this is really, this is really up to us and, and all of us together can really keep, keep going with our in-person planning. Other things I really, I want to put out there for our families and, you know, a number of, of people have reached out and, and asked, you know, what can we do? How can we help? How can we keep our students in school? And how can we keep? And how can we keep things going forward in a positive way? One of our students on the incident command team has been very, who is a senior, has been very consistent in her advocacy that as a senior, she wants to end her senior year in person at, with her friends at school and have that end of her senior year in person. So I, I'll just reiterate how important it is for all of us to work together on this and for all of us to really practice patience during this transition. So this is going to be a transition for students. It's going to be a transition for teachers into this new learning model and with all the COVID-19 protocols. So we have students who have done a six-period learning day before. We have, we have our sixth graders who have not. But no one has done the, the six-period day with these COVID-19 protocols and distance learners. So this is different. And so we request that you really, everyone practice patience during this transition. Set, setbacks are part of the process. It won't be perfect. But we have, we've been through this now. We've been through setbacks that we've moved through and made improvements and gotten better. So we know we can do it. But it will be, they'll be part of, part of this transition. Please model positivity, grace, and gratitude. As adults, we are going to set the tone during this transition. And we know, we set forth as a board, I'm going to just remind us two of our goals, a board and superintendent goals, that this is what we're, we have wanted to do to return students to full-time, five-day-a-week in-person instruction as soon as it's safe to do so. And so we're able to do this. And so it's exciting that we're able to do this and that we're in a place that we're able to do this now. And so it's exciting that we're able to do this and that we're in a place that we're able to do this now. And so we want, we want to see all of us, even though it's going to be clunky at first, modeling that positivity. Because this really will serve as examples for our students. And then we ask families to really partner with us to support your child. Call and email your child's teachers when you have questions and need support because we are all in this together. So, so with that, I do want to open this up to questions. I'll just tell you that we are going to be communicating with families. And if families and about this change and if family and students want to change their learning model for the remainder of the year, they will have the opportunity to do so. So with that, I know, I know that was a lot, but we had a lot to say. So if there's, if you have any questions, I'm going to exit out of this so that we can all see each other and have a conversation. So.
So Barb, do you want to run the conversation? Would you like me to run it, which is easier for you?
Oh, I'd be happy to.
Sometimes that's easier, so I will let you call on board members and run this conversation.
Terrific. Okay, I saw Kelly's hand.
Barb, thank you so much for that very thorough update. And I'm very cautiously optimistic about the end of our school year here this spring. I'm really excited about the opportunity to get our kids back in school. I also want to thank you for mentioning that it's really up to us. It's up to the families for us to keep this going. And, you know, knowing that the testing is more readily available than it was when we were doing this last fall. And getting that every two weeks, testing, making that happen. And specifically coming back after spring break. I wanted to kind of throw out there kind of a comment slash question on what would be your recommendation for families who travel during spring break? When we come back that first week with the gold cohort, the blue cohort, et cetera. That's my first question. And then my, my second question or comment, I guess here is that. I just really appreciate your thoroughness in this and really trying to get our kids back into school. And that my, what I took away from that message is if we have kids who are at all sick, if any question, the quarantine doesn't impact. As a mitigation strategy of us moving a new learning model change, that's the safest way. Keep kids home if they're in quarantine and then, you know, we can get them back to school when they're, it's been deemed safe for them. Are those?
Yes, thanks for, thanks for reiterating that because the quarantines, the quarantines don't keep us from continuing. It's when our staff can't, can't be there for us is one thing. But when, when students have to quarantine, they, we have a plan for them to quarantine at home. So there's nothing wrong with that. So let's, let's make sure we do that because it really does help us. But your question about travel, so we are going to put together something to, to help families make some decisions. And I think we're going to personalize it a little bit for Matamede because here, here's what I want you to understand, I guess, is that there's a general statement about travel. Some travel, we know that some families are going to be going by car to a cabin somewhere with just their family. And that's a different kind of travel than flying to out of the country, for example. And so not all travel is the same, but I'll reiterate that we know our mitigation strategies. So if you are doing something and, and spring break, there's more freedom to do things that might tempt you to not follow the best. Practices for mitigating the spread of COVID-19. So if, if you're, if your travel or your spring break involves. Not following those rules, if you're socializing with large groups, even if you're in town and you're socializing with large groups without masks. What we would like for you to consider the impact of that potentially. And we would like you to be testing. We have those couple of days where we have no school days, there's opportunities for testing. So we would like you to do that. So if you know that you're going out of the country, I, we would recommend that you spend that week when you come back. By, by quarantining and not coming back for those, those hybrid days. However, we do have those hybrid days in part to allow us to continue to do that physical distancing in school. So we'll put something together to help people understand that part of it is travel. But part of it is also just doing things that do not follow those mitigation strategies while you're on spring break. So it's, it's a number of layers to that. And let's make sure we come back healthy and we watch those, those symptoms. Cause we, we really, our goal is to get kids in and to stay in. So I would really want to emphasize, I don't know if I've emphasized that enough. I might not be done. So, so that is our goal here. Tony, I saw you had a question.
Just a, a quick comment and follow-up question. I really appreciate this, the, the concept of we're all in this together and this is up to us. It's been a challenging year, no doubt. And this is the latest challenge in front of us. And I do want to thank the community for, there's been strategies we've been, all been practicing to get the numbers down. We've seen in the elementary schools, the kids have been in person and we haven't seen a lot of numbers rising in those things. So like, I do want to thank the community that, for the steps they've taken to help get us to where we are today. And to reiterate that the work isn't done yet, so don't, don't ease up, keep it up. I do want to ask though, I do think that moving forward, the changes in, of guidance are different enough. What does it look like and if changes were going to have to happen? I don't know if it's going to be the same as it has been in the past. What, how do you see if, if we need to go make a change because there's an outbreak, how does that look?
Sure. Yeah, so if we did have an outbreak, it may require that we close. Would that we close a grade level, it could require that we close a school, depending on what it looks like through contact tracing. If we did that, now I say close, I shouldn't have used that word, it would mean that we shift to distance learning. Because it's, it, if it's an outbreak, we do have to, if it truly an outbreak, that would require pulling back and going to distance learning for a quarantine. We haven't seen that yet. We know some, there are other districts that have had that with like, with a school or, or a classroom. Well, we, we had some, we've had a classroom in the past at one of our elementaries that we quarantined because they weren't able to. But that was a close contact sort of thing that they weren't able to maintain, ensure that the physical distancing was there. We don't have as much difficulty with having our high school and middle school students. Say in the side seat as we do with like a kindergarten class, but it would be moving to a distance learning for a time based on what our public health.
And would it be fair to assume that those pivots would, could be quick in nature?
Thank you. They would be quick. So here's the other part of this I would want you to know. At this point, we are not going to be coming to the board for these conversations. They would be based on recommendations from public health. So I'm not going to be asking you to vote. We would just be doing it. You had a resolution at the beginning of the year that allowed for this to happen. For our administrative team to make the call on this when, when something like this was required. So right now we are asking for your approval because we have the time to do it. But in the case of what Tony has outlined, we would not. So I would just make that call. Stacy?
Well, first I want to say thank you for all the effort that's been put into this. I am really impressed with the plan and I'm, I stand with that senior who was on the incident command team. That I, I want seniors back and get to finish their year. I want, and I want all our kids back. And so I'm, I'm just really excited about this. And as Tony mentioned, I, I think it's the whole community really did their part. And I think it's great that we can reap the benefits of that. And I agree with Kelly that I hope we'll continue to do so. So that's, I just wanted to make that comment of, I really appreciate you and your team, all the principals, all the teachers. That's actually one other thing I did want to point out. I really appreciated the fact that you really were thorough about ensuring that it will be. Safety of students and teachers is at the foremost consideration in all of this. And so as I just want the public to know, we've had many conversations, you know, leading up to this. And that's, that's just been a key to, to feeling confident that everyone can come back. And so thanks to everyone. Thank you.
Lucy?
So I have two quick things. I know last I spoke with you Barb, you were confirming with building principals that we would be able to do this safely for our teachers. So the teachers must have the six foot distance from students. And I know our class sizes vary in, in different sections, depending on how schedules work out and things like that in different courses. And so have we been able to confirm that we will be able to keep teachers completely safe with that six foot distance that's required?
Justin or Mike?
Yeah, hi Lucy, I can answer that question. And I would say yes, the classroom that I was in was one of our smaller classrooms this week. And the other piece of information that we need to find out is going to be to ask parents and families to opt back. So whatever they're going to opt back into for the learning model and that will really solidify our thoughts around, around that. And so once we send that form out tomorrow and then we have it due next Friday, the 5th. That will really tell us, you know, right now, looking at our numbers that are in distance learning. It is about 120 more students than we had opt-in at the beginning of the year. And so that's a considerable amount. It's around 20%, a little bit higher than 20% of our total student enrollment right now. So it's, it's significant. So our class sizes that are a little bit bigger at the high school here, we can still be able to fit that in. We've also thought about, in the case that we do have a classroom, thought about some different options and using different spaces too. So that's all on our radar.
Thank you. The other thing I want to talk a little about is the terminology, learning model. So I mean, we keep talking about physical spaces and mitigation strategies, but Barb brought up a very important point that it is a different learning model. All the teachers in our state have not been trained to teach distance learners and face-to-face learners at the same time. I work in teacher preparation. We teach people how to work face-to-face with students and we teach them how to work online with students. But we don't have programs and our teachers have not training to do both at the same time. And so this grace to our teachers and this time is extremely important in order for them to get their heads around what this is going to look like. And then that grace to them as they figure that out. Because not only is it going to vary and be different than what they've done before, but it's going to vary from class section to class section, depending on, on what those numbers look like. And it's going to vary day-to-day based on quarantines. And so I really appreciate your strong focus on that learning model, because that's what it's about. It's about the student learning and this is something our teachers have worked very hard at without training, right? They're figuring it out. And so that grace still is very important. So I thank you for making sure we've got the time and the resources to support them.
Julie?
Well, I just wanted to reiterate that this was, has been our goal for the entire year. And we set this as our goal and I want to thank you for all that you've done to help us make this happen. As a board, we have expressly stated that our priority has been keeping our staff and students safe. I can't remember exactly what we did with all the air movement testing and things we did at the beginning of the year, which was big. To try to make the air quality safer in all the classrooms for the teachers and for our students. I was just wondering if you could, if anyone could highlight some of the things we're doing to keep our lunchroom safer for students.
Justin?
Yep. Hi Julie. So what we, given a space requirements that we have now with the three feet of social distancing. It changes at least at the high school a little bit. We can, we can get everybody at the current lunch tables that we have been using and not have to use the other spaces. So there's more than three feet in getting six students at a table meant for 12. So it's more than three feet from the nearest student. And so going side to side, it's a little over three feet and going diagonally across the table, it's just over four feet. And so we've got that distancing in place for that. And again, with the assigned seat protocol that was done in the last executive order update. I think that it should go fairly well. And again, students just watching what they've been doing in the lunchroom and cafeteria, they've been following those protocols. So we've been really pleased with what students have been doing to also keep that health and safety component in place as well.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure you have many details to consider like parking and all kinds of things like that. So I'm not going to ask you that, but, but I'm happy to hear about options for distancing in, in the lunchroom. So thank you.
One, one thing that everyone might not know, those of you who have been through the high school for a while. There is, there are three lunches now instead of the two. So if you had ever walked into the lunchroom in years past and saw all the students that were packed in there, it is different now with three lunches as well. So just, so for those of you who are imagining it, it's, it's a little different.
And I'll just add too, sorry to jump back in, but when the weather gets nicer, we will have students have the ability to eat outside as well. So we've got a nice area right outside the cafeteria commons area that students utilize and sometimes an increment weather as well. So.
Thanks.
Hopefully not soon. Okay.
At the middle school, we're going to continue to have the two spaces for the cafeteria and the gym. So we're able to put tables in both areas and be able to spread out the kids as we have been doing, as well as doing the assigned seats. So we make sure that kids are safe and that they're not roaming around and going from table to table. So that's how we're going to do that at the middle school.
Kelly, do you still, yep, Kelly?
Yeah, one last comment. You know, I've been an educator myself for 25 years and I just want to personally thank the teachers, paraprofessionals, support staff, principals. We've never seen anything like this in education or I certainly haven't in my 25 years in education. We may never see it again and the flexibility that has been, you know, shown in the last year, the patience, the thinking outside of the box. And just working so hard for students. I just want to thank all of the teachers and support staff personally. It has been something that I work with educators all across the country right now. And I've really seen a tremendous amount of leadership from just the staff in Matamede High Schools. It's been incredible and you're probably not told it enough, so I just want to say it. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Kevin?
I too want to echo what Kelly said. Being married to a teacher who is teaching remotely from our house, I know firsthand every day. How much work it is, how much extra work it is and how disruptive it is from the normal way that one would teach four and five-year-olds. Zoom is just not, not the same. And so the flexibility, the perseverance, the ability to pivot, we use pivot a lot. But I just want to thank the entire Matamede High staff, all of them, everyone. For this amazing flexibility of what you're doing and all that hard, extra hard work that you do has not gone unnoticed. And to the plan, I think it's a good one, it sounds. I mean, we saw very granular, very attention to all these little details. And there's a saying about the so-and-so in the details. And I think that we really do have a great plan, thanks to the team. Again, thanks to everyone from the Matamede High School communities. Oh, and thank you parents for being with us on this. And if we can, hopefully we can continue right through to graduation. I look forward to going to Aldrich and doing, doing that if we can or outside, maybe, I don't know. But I look forward to the graduation.
I know that there, there are a number of plans in the works to, options, so a smile?
For what you're saying, Kevin. So we've had perspectives from administrators, teachers and now students. Personally, I've spoken with many other students as well. We're comfortable with where we at right now with this hybrid system. We're used to it. And I know we've always talked about consistency and the students really just want that. Even though, sure, it'd be very nice to have all of us go in full-time and see more people and stuff. I don't think that is the best course of action. And we've also talked a lot about mental health, even though it hasn't been brought up today. Lot of students could possibly struggle with going back and back and forth. Going back and back and forth between this hybrid and then distance learning, keep on going back and forth. That's, that's very. Like taxing on this, on a student. And I know many students who've told me about that. And I just wanted to ask kind of. I, I'm just kind of confused why we're coming back after spring break. When you already talked about many people traveling and you brought up some recommendations. I'm just not comfortable. Well, I'm, I'm not gonna be in full time because I'll stay distance because I know that. My end goal is just to finish my senior year, even though the senior is not, not normal. I, I wish I could at least finish and graduate, have a senior party or whatever. I'm just. I'm just confused with how we're going. We talk about using the data, but I feel like we're using, we're going. Going off of our emotions, we're seeing the numbers are decreasing and we're, we're being overly joyful about. Where we're going. So we're saying, okay, let's become less restrictive. And I feel like that's kind of confusing. Because this. This virus is stronger when one, you don't have masks on or we don't have enough. Distance between ourselves. And sure, we're gonna keep our masks on because that's obviously required. But when we're reducing the distance and we are putting more variables into, I guess, a controlled environment at. As of right now, we're having low numbers. I just don't see the need for this. For this change as a student, many students. Agree with me. I probably have made up your minds, but I would just like to add that as a, as a student. As a senior, as a member of this school board, that I would like to stay with where we at and just see. The school year out and hopefully nothing bad happens from there on.
Thanks, Ismail. You bring up a, a couple, a couple of things I should, I should highlight. One, that there, you know. We, we know that there's not agreement on, there was an agreement when we went into distance learning. There hasn't been agreement on. On hybrid model. There's not agreement now, I know, in, in this change. And that is actually like that has been kind of our theme all year long, whether it's with families. You know, I, I was, if I know people have asked me, how do the teachers feel? There's, there's not agreement either. There are people, there are teachers who are excited, I've heard from. There are teachers who are really nervous about this as well. There are different opinions on the block. And the sixth period day. And I imagine there are with the students as well. I imagine there are students who have different opinions on that as well. And so I guess, you know, that's again, I'll just say that's, that's kind of the theme this year. Is how do we move this forward? And so what I'll just say is that as a school board and superintendent, we set goals. We were going to make our decisions based on objective information provided by public health. So I recognize that there are a lot of emotions around this decision. Absolutely, there are a lot of emotions. I'm, and I'm gonna tell you that the, the decision that are the recommendation I'm putting forth. Is based on my information that I've, the information from public health once again is looking at our data. And what is, and given context to that data. I use the same process, I'll just say, when we moved into distance learning. And if you recall, there are a lot of emotions and a lot of feelings about that. And that's why I tried to highlight at the beginning, the difference. But you know, the number was the same on both sides of that curve. And yet the context was really different. And so in making this recommendation, our public health, again, we made our decision based on objective information provided by public health. And I'll just say that that's, so I, so I'm not, I don't mean to negate the emotion because I do know it's there. I recognize that. And yet the decision isn't based on that emotion. The decision's based on the, on the information. Now, the other part that Ismail brought up is, is it's mental health and student wellness. And that's another part that we have talked about. So I'm glad you brought that up, Ismail. And so this is, this, I probably should have spent more time. When I asked, you know, families to really think about what does your student need and reaching out and partnering with us. You know, bringing students back into, there are a number of families who have said that their students not being in person. Really contributed to mental health concerns for their, for their child. And now Ismail's talking about the fact that these changes are going to contribute to mental wellness as well. So I, I'm going to just say that we know that there are, are changes that do impact, you know, transitions. Impact student stability in terms of understanding routines. There are things that we need to work with and our teachers are. That's part of the planning time is to talk about those transitions. I also want to say to all those families who said, you know, by having my student back in person, it's going to support public, mental health. We knew that when we were in the sixth period day and there was no pandemic, we still had. Student wellness that was a concern for us. So it's not actually the structure that's, that is always is going to be. Like now that children are in person, that doesn't take care of everything that we need to take care of. So I really encourage families to reach out, encourage students to reach out, to share if they need support. Now in the future, this, because this has been a hard year and it continues to be. And I know that. So I appreciate Ismail that you're bringing up. Student wellness is an important factor and an important place we should pay attention, both as families and as staff. So thank you for that. Other questions? Okay, so I'm gonna do this one more time. Families, everyone, we can do this and it really is up to us in order to stay in. It does require students. And I noticed there actually, I noticed that there were quite a few students in attendance tonight. More so than usual. So that's nice that we have, we have students involved in this meeting. It really is up to us. Layering those mitigation strategies make a difference. We know that. And so I want to encourage you. To lead by example at home in the community, really help us, really help us help each other so that we can move this forward. And if you have no other questions, we are putting this forward as our learning model recommendation, looking for approval this evening.
Move approval?
Thank you, Kevin.
Second.
So Stacy, did you second? I didn't hear. Okay, I thought so. You can try it all night.
It was, it was Stacy, not Kelly?
Stacy said it first, yes. Sorry, Kelly. So we have a motion from Kevin, seconded by Stacy to adopt this learning model change with the timeline. Assuming everything stays as it is, right? There are a lot of assumptions in the model in terms of COVID numbers and data. Saying on the, on the trajectories that we currently see. So with that, any last discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Kevin Donovan?
Aye.
Julie McGraw, aye. Kelly Regan?
Aye.
Stacy Stout?
Aye.
Tony Vassouni?
Aye.
And Lucy Payne?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Barb and team for all the information. And I wanna let the public know that the board has been feeding Barb questions forever, right? All year, we've had questions. And Barb's presentation addresses many of the questions that we ask prior to the meeting. So sometimes it, it might appear the board is not involved in conversation. But we are the entire times thinking about these items, the same time Barb is, and sending her questions all the time. Well, what about this? Can we do this? And then those questions feed the presentation that she puts together to make sure it's clear to all of us and the public. So. Thank you, board members, for taking the time to always be thinking about this and providing those questions. So we can have the information upfront. In that presentation part. So with that, we'll move on through the agenda. Next, we have a number of items with Jeff Priest. Our business manager, starting with the approval of the revised long-term maintenance facilities maintenance plan. So there's Jeff. And Jeff, can you share your screen or do you need me to do mine?
Yeah, nope, I can, I can do it. There we go. How's that? Everybody see that? Okay, what, what we're gonna ask the, the board to do tonight is to revise our, our long-term facilities maintenance plans. And so just quickly for new board members, every year for, for Minnesota School District to participate in the. In the LTFM program, school boards have, you're actually, they actually approve a ten-year plan. We, of course, this year, when the, when the board approved that back in June, I was focusing on this, on this current school year. So what we're, what we would like to do now is to, is to make. A change to that plan that the board approved. And, and maybe I jumped down to that, the lower part on the screen there. Where we say the district has annually set aside two hundred to four hundred thousand of LTFM revenue. For roof repair, replacement. But I'm gonna jump to a slide in a second that looks at. The scope of a project at the, at the high school and middle school involving roof replacement and, and wall panels. So we wanna do this. I think we talked to the facilities group back in January. The one thing we're able to do is to avoid construction inflation by moving these projects up. And we're gonna, we would like to take advantage of, of very long, you're gonna see some really low interest rates on, on bonds here. In a minute. So what the board approved, the board approved the letting of bids for, we'll call this option A up here. And, and so the base bid roof and wall panels at the middle school has this section A. We felt within the current year LTFM plan, we can fund that. We set aside four hundred thousand dollars in the current year. And then typically what we planned is we kick these other repairs down the road. And that's that addendum one and addendum two. So just to take care of some water penetration, some leaks, it's like, let's get these, let's get these done. Let's get addendum one and then, and addendum two done in this current year. So what you do is, a lot of districts have done, and this, this made sense even. I think the, the capability to do LTFM bonds has been around for about six years now. I think I, I did one of these really early in, in the Robbinsdale School District, but without going through every one of these line items up here. It's all about, so, so down on this total annual ten-year plan towards the bottom. That's what the board approved back in, on June twenty fifth. We submitted that to this Department of Education. It's been approved. But what we wanna do then is, is sell some LTFM bonds, they're called general obligation bonds. And you essentially. Moved the, the bond resources, bond revenue up in that fiscal year twenty-two. So we get six hundred thousand dollars of, of bond revenue. And then we use LTFM funds. To pay, to amortize those bonds over the next five years. So it allows us to get that project done. And, and utilizing future LTFM revenue. And it's just amortized over fiscal year twenty-three through. Through twenty-seven. So the six hundred thousand in bonds, funds that addendum one, and addendum two. And, and I'll just mention, we, we took bids yesterday, we received bids, we had six bidders on this, on these projects. We're gonna be, actually be a little bit under that. That four hundred thousand and then the, the six hundred thousand that we showed. I think we're at about nine fifty on the, on the bid that we will bring back to the board in. In March. So I wanted to put on the bottom there because you're, we're using LTF funds to amortize these bonds. On the bottom, the important piece there is there is no tax impact. So we're just again, using LTFM, future LTFM funds. To pay off those bonds. Questions? And, and we can take care of the roof and wall panels. Projects at the, at the high school and middle school and get those done right now.
Julie, go ahead.
So Jeff, we discussed this at our last facilities meeting. And, and just as, if everyone remembers, it's again to fix the leaking.
Correct.
In the buildings.
Yep.
I just wanted to make sure everyone remembered that.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I, I move. Second.
Moved by Julie, seconded by Tony to approve the revised long-term maintenance facility, facilities maintenance plan. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Kevin Donovan?
Aye.
Julie McGraw, aye. Kelly Regan?
Aye.
Stacy Stout?
Aye.
Tony Vassouni?
Aye.
And Lucy Payne?
Aye. Motion carries. Jeff, you're on for a while yet. Your next one, approval of the resolution authorizing the sale of issuance of. Six hundred and forty-five thousand general obligation facility maintenance bonds.
Okay, you know, Barb told me to, to go quick through this, but I think I can get done in about an hour with all these presentations.
Barb only took fifty-seven minutes with her.
I claimed the majority of the meeting, so.
Okay, so related to the, the prior item is the, so you've got a resolution. And we're actually looking at two different bond sales. So, so the LTFM. We're, we're asking the board to prove the sale, six hundred thousand dollars of the, the, the amount that, that will be distributed. Six hundred thousand dollars to do that addendum one and addendum two and do that and get that done this summer. So I think that when I talked to the facility group, I was using an estimate of, of. One percent interest on the bonds. And I thought, I, I, being conservative, we don't see, never seen numbers like that before. So. I've done this selling bonds and it's at three and a half, four percent. It still made sense. So. So that estimated interest, that's not, that's, that's not incorrect there. It's not four point six or forty-six percent. It's point four six, less than one half of one percent. And so then what you see is the amortization of those bonds using again, the, the future. LTFM revenue appropriations and the amortization is as follows there. Are showing FY twenty-three through FY twenty-seven. So this does reduce the amount of revenue that we have available. In those years, but we've taken care of. A six hundred thousand dollar project in this current year. And then we've avoided the construction inflation. Inflation that we know would be, would be attached to those future projects. Those are the LTFM bonds. And then I'm quite sure this board has done a few of these refunding options. And you do that in when, when interest rates are low. It's, I, I think the best way to describe this is, is this is just like our refinance of a home mortgage. So everybody's probably familiar with that. So we had the old debt that's listed here. Then, and I think the coupon rates were probably four to four and a half percent on that, on the, on the old debt. So that pint there, the principal and interest, we show that for the old debt that we're going to retire. And then the new debt with. And you can see the interest rate on the OPEB bonds of point eight zero. So they're higher. Because OPEB bonds are, are taxable bonds. So bond holder has to include the interest in taxable income. Don't do that on the general obligation LTFM. So of course, then the market's a little bit higher for the refunding bonds. But in our debt service fund, it's savings over those from FY twenty-two to FY twenty-four of sixty-six thousand. So really makes sense to, to do this sale as well. So the resolution has both of the bond issues in it. And we're just asking the board to, to approve. Questions?
Hearing no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you. Move by Stacy.
Second.
Second by Julie. Any discussion? On the motion. Roll call vote, please.
Kevin Donovan.
Aye.
Julie McGraw.
Aye.
Kelly Regan.
Aye.
Stacy Stout.
Aye.
Tony Vassouni.
Aye.
And Lucy Payne.
Chair's eye, motion carries. You're halfway done, Jeff.
All right. Thank you.
So next one on the agenda is approval of the 2020-2021 revised budget.
Okay, it's this one then.
We still see, oh, there goes.
Yeah, how's that? Okay. I mean, you know, we've been, we have been, I think I look back and we've probably been talking about these revised numbers since maybe October. So the board has seen these several times. And I'm going to go to the the key takeaways here. And I think this was probably, I reported on this probably back in December. So you know what? First, I'm going to go find it to my numbers. There we go. So the revisions are, as you can see there, revised revenue for, we're talking about the next, we're talking about next year's budget, but this is 2021 total and looking at the general fund. So the sources of revenue there for the general fund as well as the uses. And then we're projecting a surplus of 310,000, 310,245. Nope. So the key takeaways here, we, and I know we've talked about this several times. So we saw this, the revision from the preliminary budget that the board approved back in June. We reduced general education aid to reflect our change in enrollment. We have received and used about 996,000 of COVID relief funds. That number that we're looking at, that surplus of 310,000, that puts us well above our board target of 8% on assigned fund balance. We're looking at a projection of 8.7. And then again, we've been talking about this at at several meetings. But we, and I think I had this in there earlier, we need the board to take action basically to keep our auditors happy when they're here next summer. Did you have the bar to prove this budget? Yes, we did. So it's just taking official action on these items that that we've talked about. You want me to key in? I know we've looked at this several times, but you want me to key in on any of the, any of the items there?
So Jeff, you're correct. We spent a lot of time looking at these numbers at study sessions and things. So unless an individual board member wants to speak up for something they want to look at more closely, I think we're good.
I feel like Jeff keeps us very well up to date on how much we're spending and what it looks like. So thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve the revised budget.
So moved.
Thank you, Kevin. Kelly, was that you?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Sometimes it's hard to tell. Move by Kevin, second by Kelly. Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Kevin Donovan.
Aye.
Julie McGraw.
Aye.
Kelly Regan.
Aye.
Stacy Stout.
Aye.
Tony Vassouni.
Aye.
And Lucy Payne.
Chair's eye, motion carries. Last one, Jeff, approval of your 2020 budget planning assumptions.
Okay, so earlier this month, we we reviewed the assumptions that we're using as we develop the budget for '21, '22. So now we're talking about the following year with the assumptions that we have in place. You can see for, and we're just looking at general fund, won't be long will we bring in the other special revenue funds and debt service funds to the board. But this is the the big general fund, the important fund. So again, surplus plan with the assumptions that we have in place, that 254,000, the revenue over expenditures and a fund balance, again, adding to the fund balance and keeping us well above the the board's fund balance target. So I probably won't look at each one of these. We just did this a couple of weeks ago, but I just want to put this one up for especially for new board members. And we've talked about the the basic general education aid component generates 55% of that of that total revenue. So where that basic formula goes, that 6,600 is is really important. So right now we we have built in, so the numbers that you're seeing on the total revenue reflects us using a point five increase up to 6,600. And we know the governor's budget recommendation is 1%. So we're stepping back off the governor's recommendation by half of a percent. That's the big one. You know, obviously, as the, we were watching as we are in the midst of a legislative session and will will see where that ends up. But just so we know, so the numbers that are reflected, total revenue, we're using that 1%. We basically on our other other components of general education aid, that's a dollar amount times people units. We are using, as we, as we talked about a couple of weeks ago, we're using current law formulas. So planning no increases for any of those components. The board has already, the uncertainty you have developing a budget is the tax levy because the school board adopted that levy back in December. So so we know that 9.3 is is going to be fairly accurate, plus or minus delinquent taxes and excess taxes, et cetera. So and then our special education aid, which is a part of the state categorical, or 67% of that, we're assuming there's no increase in in that component. So I think we're we're going pretty conservative on on the on the revenue side. And then this is the big part of the of the expenditure side within the general fund, and that's our salaries and wages. For the most part, we're moving current staff forward. And then we allow for changes, inflation through negotiations. We have some contracts that are already have been settled for the '21, '22 year. All of those enhancements have been factored into the budget. And then again, for for contracts that haven't been, we do provide for some inflation to those contracts. That is the, what, 77% of the total spend on the general fund. Here's some of the other, whoa, we just lose that. I'll just jump down to that last slide. There we go. So here's here's some of the other kind of non-staff kinds of expenditures. And while we've built into the budget, so.
If you have the LTFM, you have, you, I think you're on a different one right now. That's on, you're sharing the, sharing a different screen than you're looking at.
Well, how does that happen? What I you know what? I probably wouldn't have any more on that on that presentation. So again, it's the, it's the information that we just looked at two weeks ago, the assumptions. And I think the important thing is there right now, with the, I think, really conservative assumptions on the revenue side, probably both revenue and expense. We're projecting a a surplus of about 254,000, which will again continue to build back that on a sign fund balance. Questions?
Go ahead, Kevin.
So we get the state budget forecast tomorrow. Is that correct?
I haven't heard that. I mean, yeah, we're waiting to, you know, we're certainly waiting to see that. We're waiting to see the the House and the Senate to put a budget bill out there. So we have the governor. So.
So I did have occasion on Tuesday to ask Senator Chuck Weger, our senator, what he thought for the budget for schools. And and he apparently is going to be bringing forward a two plus two. And I asked him what he thought the likelihood of that would be. And I got from him, reading between the lines, that that might really be a push. But again, we don't know until we get that. I think it's the end of February forecast, which might help.
Sure, that that certainly helps.
Put some light on where we're at currently as a state. But I think you're very wise on budgeting with your assumptions to where they're at. So.
Okay.
Other questions? Looking for a motion to approve the assumptions.
So moved.
Thank you, Julie.
Right there.
Thank you, Tony. Move by Julie, second by Tony to approve the budget planning assumptions. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Kevin Donovan.
Aye.
Julie McGraw.
Aye.
Kelly Regan.
Aye.
Stacy Stout.
Aye.
Tony Vassouni.
Aye.
And Lucy Payne.
Chair's eye, motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. So we're at 9:03. We've been doing this for two hours staring at screens. I'm checking with board members to see if you need a five-minute screen break or if we should just keep going through the agenda and wrap this up.
I'm happy to keep going.
Let's keep going.
Okay, I just want to make sure, just checking in. I I trust you'll interrupt and ask for recess if you ever need that, but I just want to check in at two hours. So next on the agenda for actions, we have approval of annually reviewed policies with no changes.
Yes, so I'll be quick. So again, these policies went through the policy committee. We do look at these annually. There are no changes recommended, but we do need to, these are policies we need to look at annually. Typically, we do three readings. We're not, we're recommending or policy committee, I think, discussed recommending this. So I'll say I'm recommending that we don't have three readings since these are annually reviewed, they have no changes. And I'm recommending that they are approved tonight.
So what we're hoping to do is just sit down on the policy committee and be part of that conversation. We're hoping to just acknowledge the fact that they have been reviewed because there are no changes. And when we do the three policy readings, so the community has the opportunity to talk at public comments and gives us time to ask questions on changes. There are no changes. And so we just need to acknowledge for these policies because they need to be in review that we have done our annual review.
So moved.
Thank you, Kevin.
Second.
So moved by Kevin, second by Stacy to approve all the annually annually reviewed policies with no changes. Any discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Kevin Donovan.
Aye.
Julie McGraw.
Aye.
Kelly Regan.
Aye.
Stacy Stout.
Aye.
Tony Vassouni.
Aye.
And Lucy Payne.
Chair's eye, motion carries. Moving on to school board committee reports, starting with Tony, AMSD.
I can report from both the January and February meetings. And the next meeting is March 5th. And to Kevin's point that the, at our meeting, I do believe they said the estimate for the forecast is tomorrow for the budget update. Most of the focus from the last meetings have been legislatively focused. And what's going on at the legislature, they had a nice preview with a lot of legislators from around the state and also got some updates from both the governor and vice governor. At the February meeting, we did pass a session brief on the constitutional amendment. It's sometimes referred to as the page amendment that's being talked about trying to get on to the next general election ballot. They had, the brief is on their website. I highly recommend if anyone's not familiar with what the page amendment is, and it's talking about redefining education in the Minnesota Constitution. The the session brief does a nice, really brief job of getting the highlights in case you're looking for that. And I'd be happy to send it to anyone if they want and sent to them. And then lastly, I just want to highlight the website. It's a great resource. Especially, I don't know, with Kelly being new, it has all the updates on the legislative front and how things are moving through. Being new to that, that's kind of a great resource to look through. And they also have a reimagined Minnesota, which is a nice strategic plan that's been developed just as I highlight to look through. That's my update.
Any questions for Tony? Go ahead, Kevin. After you mute yourself, we'll hear the question better.
I do, I do it at least once here. In the position paper on the page, Keshkari proposed constitutional amendment is the, and I could read the, I'll go out and read the document. But did they take a position to endorse or to not?
It's not a full endorsement. It's acknowledging some of the ideas in there. It's not, it doesn't go really one way or the other is how I read through it. They have some concerns, but they have some acknowledgement to agreements to the concepts that are being brought forth.
The reason I ask is tomorrow I am on a small task force with the Minnesota School Boards Association to examine this same proposal. And so I've been reading voraciously, anything I can get my hands on that has anything to do with this, try to just figure this out. So I was hoping that I'll read the paper. That should be helpful to me. So thank you.
So Kevin, I know in the next issue of the MSBA Journal, there will be an article too about the amendment. So I'm not sure if you'll have access to that with MSBA, but I know they have an article coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Any other questions for Tony? Next is Maeve, Julie.
We just had a Maeve board meeting on Monday. And the mission moment this month where they highlight places where they send donate some of their money was Brian Farmer from the Real World Design Team. And there, they have a team that won state again this year and is off to nationals on April 24th. So it's pretty exciting. This year, they let me see, what did I, where did I write that? They, their focus this year was on a drone delivery program. Logistics and things like that. So and it's more of an international program this year where US, China, and 10 other countries. So it'll be a pretty big virtual event. Last month, Maeve did a hearts of gratitude program. If any of you were in the schools, you may have noticed the hearts everywhere. And parents and community members had an opportunity to buy hearts. They sold 293 hearts that teachers were given to show gratitude during this time. And the last thing for Maeve to report is that the scholarship applications close for seniors on March 15th.
Thank you, Julie. Any questions for Julie? All right. Next, we have MSBA legislative update. There's a lot happening at Capital. Tony's right, AMSD has some great resources. But if you're not on the MSBA listserv to get them delivered to your inbox, you might consider doing that. They they come every week. In addition, there's the Friday chat. I've seen Tony and Stacy there, I think, a couple of times and and others where it's a nice opportunity to get caught up with what's happening at the Capitol. The language we put forward for instructional hours was finally jacketed yesterday. Senate File 1441, and I don't have the House file number yet. And so next week, they've asked me to come testify again, and I might have a conflict. So if someone else is interested in testifying around the instructional hours piece that we've been working on, if you'd let me know through email, that would be great. The time would be Wednesday at 3 o'clock. We don't have, it's not scheduled yet, but we've got two possible times where that bill might be heard. And so I'm looking for someone Wednesday at 3 o'clock to just hold that time in case we need a testifier. Kevin? A testifier, Kevin.
Virtual, I assume.
Yes, virtual.
Okay.
So if anyone is available, if you want to just email me, um, and then I'll keep that person updated on what's happening this week. Um, and that would be the Senate. I I have the House language is very similar, um, but I cannot, I haven't found the House file number. Someone sent me that as an attachment. So that's all moving along quite nicely. So thank you for. Um, putting that resolution forward and working on that. Any questions?
Jacketed means given a number, a bill number? So I don't know what that sign means, Lucy, so.
All right, um, Barb and I and um, some other superintendents were working behind the scenes on the language, reviewing language. Between the House and the Senate files to try and get them as close as we could to save debate on the floor. And what we've been working Bart since January, December. It's been a while, um, but now finally they've locked down the language because the bill includes other things besides our language. That we worked on and includes some pieces on the innovation zone and includes pieces on distance learning. There's a really nice piece in this bill about. Districts being able to continue distance learning. For students enrolled in their districts. I mean, again, this is all bill language. It's not approved. But would allow districts to continue distance learning um only for their students, but not for students outside their district. Right now, it's a lengthy approval process through M D E. To be an academy to do that. Remember, we were, we had an academy years ago that we've closed. So there is lots of really good language in this bill, but as it goes through the process, um, it can change quite a bit. So. I'm excited that it's gotten this far and I just hope it makes it through in some sort of format. We'll see what happens.
So if it's an internal academy. For student learning, I mean, is that an opportunity where we're losing money by not having a virtual academy? I mean, are we making a mistake by not trying to bring our virtual academy back?
So I think there's a lot of resource questions around that. I don't know if we want to send that to Barb and ask for an update later on that. I don't think we're in a position to answer that tonight, Barb. Are we?
No, I'm not. So I could look into that for you.
Well, what have you been doing? Just kidding. Just kidding, Barb.
I got, I got it.
So, um, moving on, uh, nine sixteen board, Kevin.
Well, let's see, uh, the big, the big piece going on right now is uh, we're really in the midst of a superintendent search. Uh, we had a very uh, good number of applicants to choose from. And so now with the closed, we are beginning the process of wedding, winnowing it down. To a manageable level of interviews. And so we're down to, as of today, we're down to five. And uh, in a couple of weeks, we're going to then do virtual interviews. And they will be from, I think our, our day is from eight thirty to probably we won't be done until about five. With about a half hour for lunch. I I. Yeah, um, but it's, it's really, it's really interesting. It's, it's been um. Fun to work with. There's six other people I'm collaborating with on this, and it's quite interesting to see. The variety yeah of of candidates that want to take the nine sixteen superintendency. So uh, more to come on that. Of course, there's. Things that I can't really talk about at this point, but we'll be able to talk about probably at our next uh, meeting, so. The other uh, thing is I'm going to send this around. Here's my screen share. I don't know if you can see this, maybe. Hold it straight. There we go. See, I'm not quite as is uh, tech savvy as Kelly here. But I don't have privileges to do it either. So, but what I was trying to show you is that nine sixteen has a foundation, just as Montomedi has MAF. There's a foundation uh, that that uh, helps nine sixteen do the programs that it wants to do. And so um, there is now a virtual gala. Where you just go to give men, if you see, feel so moved, you go to give Ben and you can participate in their gala. And historically, a number of board members have chosen to do something with that. And uh, so once a fundraiser, always a fundraiser, I'm sorry, you guys, but uh. Nine sixteen, I think, doesn't have the same, they don't have the structure that MAF has. And so there, I think this year they really could use the help if you were moved to do so. This year is going to be a challenge for them, I think, to to have their program. That's my report.
Thank you, Kevin. Questions for Kevin about nine sixteen? Go ahead, Stacy.
I ju- I just want to say I used to serve on the nine sixteen foundation board and they really do good work. Lucy and I have been to that gala many times and. I I I just can't say enough good things about them, the way they serve students and the the money, really, they they put it to really good use. Thanks, Kevin.
You.
I was thinking the same thing, Stacy. I mean, I miss going to the gala with you this year, so we'll have to wait and go next year. All right, um, are there any other subcommittee reports? The policy committee met, but all of our work has moved over to the full agenda and we've addressed it all. Is that right? So Julie and then Kevin, or Tony, I'm sorry.
I have a community ed report.
Oh, thank you.
We had a a meeting on February seventeenth. And as of February fifteenth, Kate is bringing back two full-time employees. So that's good news for the community ed office. They're doing a lot of work to prepare for their summer programs. There will likely be a more robust offerings as. They know that the need and the desire is there from the community. So if you have suggestions, Kate is open to any suggestions anyone may have. For classes or anything. They're still not hosting any events for seniors, and this is really sad and hard for the staff because the senior involvement in community ed has always been so robust. But they look forward to bringing them back. Pickleball, however, is the exception, which is always full every week. They are currently working on plans for the summer for food truck Fridays. So that's something to look forward to possibly starting in April or May. They are also looking for two more food trucks if anyone has any recommendations. The farmer's market is moving back to Veterans Park this summer. Judd was also in attendance, and if anyone read the last city council meeting minutes, you know that. The city did win federal grant money for safer routes to schools and. That money will be focused use down by O H A. On Warner Avenue. Just highlights things that have been going well in community ed. The ice fishing was apparently a smashing success and Kate says she'll probably keep that. Coming up on March twelfth is the Minnesota Star Watch. And um, Red Cross babysitting class, Stacy is coming up for your younger son for April seventh, April nineteenth.
Does everyone remember when my older son did it and?
Holding the baby.
Yeah, it it didn't look safe, but I I think he did learn what he needed to.
Yeah. But that's a popular class. It's a popular class for males and females. So, so there's the long community ed update.
I I have one question.
But.
Yeah, go ahead, Stacy. We'll do questions to Julie first, then we'll go to Tony. Go ahead, Stacy.
Oh, I just wondered, thank you. I, all of those things sound so great. And as you know, I just love our community ed program. And did they say when the the summer booklet will come out? Because of course.
It's live March seventeenth. Sorry, I had that in my notes and I read over it. So March seventeen.
Okay.
And I believe the food trucks were published in the weekly um, Sunday night news that came out to everyone. So you can go check out which food trucks are coming.
Yes.
Kevin or Kelly, is there a question for Julie?
I just have a comment for Julie. I saw the ice fishing taking place and it looked fabulous, well attended, lots of kids and. People out there ice fishing and they actually got a not too bad of a weather day out there. So it looked really great.
They lucked out. That was great, but it was very well received. So it's on, it will become a tradition.
So Tony, you had your hand for another committee report.
Yes, um, I have a, some P T O updates. Um. So on the January meeting, they did um, welcome two new board members to the P T O. Shawna Hughes is a president-elect and Lacy. Schmidja, and I know I butchered that, but I did my best. Is the correspondent secretary. Um, they also piggybacking on these routes, safe routes to school and safe routes in general. Aaron Roche, a community member and a Montomedi family. Gave an update along with Jeff Litterman um, from the Montomedi City Council. Um, just updating on some of the, the work that they were doing and it's great to hear that the grants came through, so the work can proceed. Um, and then they also updated on some funded requests that they um. Were able to. Give some donations for equipment at Wildwood and ebooks at O H Anderson and the funded request totaled up to sixty-five hundred dollars. And I just want to thank the P T O for their continued support. Um, for their school programming. And then at the February meeting. They had a great response to the art adventure program. It's a good program that they've been doing for many years. If anyone remembers being a picture person and going to the M I A and all that training. They had to pivot this year and they allowed with the art teachers, they worked to have the students submit artwork. And they're going to be using that artwork to fill up the yearbook. And that, on that note, I will plug that the yearbooks are on sale right now. So if you want to go place your order to get some great. Montomedi student art, it's going to be highlighted in that yearbook. And then um. There, also this week, it was um, bus driver appreciation week and the hospitality committee that does some wonderful work with the P T O. Went out and did recognition, recognitions. I believe they had some custom cookies that they gave all the transportation. Personnels along with the the staff at both schools. Is my understanding. So they've had to change some of the ways they've done their hospitality work to um, show how much they appreciate. Everyone in the buildings and everyone who helps with the elementary schools, and they've been doing a good job trying to keep that up. And they're currently discussing. How to do some spring events. It's going to be the second year that um, the fun fair hasn't taken place and. Those who know me know that's a event that's near and dear to my heart, but they're looking at some ways of maybe when the weather turns to try to have some sort of. Spring closing event. Um, and they're, if anyone has a great idea, they're, they're looking for ideas right now. So that's my P T O update.
Thank you, Tony. Any questions for Tony on P T O? Go ahead, Stacy.
I don't have questions. I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure you saw I actually have two committee reports.
Okay, yeah, but I saw Kevin's hand up for yours and I think Kelly too. So we'll just keep going around the Zoom squares. So Kevin, you had put your hand up as well.
Yeah, it's uh, now that Julie pointed out, it's out in the report for the E News. But I was going to suggest El Perante has a very good food truck if uh, and it's local there, so.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, Stacy and then Kelly. Kelly, did you have something? I thought you did.
No, I actually just wanted to say that Stacy was going to report on district curriculum advisory since I had a work commitment, so it's on to Stacy.
Thank you. Go ahead, Stacy.
All right, I'm. I'm going to start with the G T Advisory Committee met. And we have a new G T coordinator this year. She's been fabulous. She's very responsive to parents. And so I think that's been really good. That I'll, I'll be very brief. She did touch on the C O G A T test will be given in third grade this year. In previous years, it was given in first and fourth. And if anyone has questions on anything, you can follow up with me. I I'll just be, I'll keep it really brief tonight and and I can go into details if you want to give me a call later. Another uh, thing that we will see at the middle school is, I don't know if everyone was aware, but this. Get away with the accelerated science. In sixth grade and then moving on up to seventh and eighth. And what they've done instead is for those current sixth graders, next year, they will begin with a seventh grade. Life science, seventh grade plus type class, and it will include three M Young Scientists Challenge within the class, and it'll be phenomenon-based learning. It sounds really exciting. Anyone can sign up for this class. They had the option uh, when it was time to sign up for classes. That will be a similar model for English in the sense that it will be an English plus offering and anyone can choose to uh, join that class. And then there was uh, one other uh, new addition. There is now a group of high school G T students who um, are working on. Identifying programming that's been uh, really successful. And so they'll report back. And then on the curriculum advisory. I'm just looking for my notes. That was held this week and as Kelly said, I just covered it for her. I found it really interesting. There's a lot going on. There was a a brief summary of some changes that are happening with the math courses. And again, I won't go into all the details, but we have a new math flow chart. I thought it it all sounded very positive. We also had an update uh, from the science department, one of the science teachers. And a lot of detail there, a lot of changes that are taking place, all sound really good. A lot of robotics and coding course. Details that they've, they've changed and they're really trying to align it with career and technical education and engineering program. All, which again, I think sounds positive. I think the one. Challenge that we probably have is that. There are a lot of great offerings and it's a challenge for students to fit everything in their court, in their schedule that they really want to take. So. I think they've added another point five class that will be a required class for graduation, so that tightens the schedule more. So there was a lot of talk about that and just how to navigate that. Uh, and one other program that they talked about that I really wanted to point out is a one called Empower You, and I think we might have had a presentation on it. And that is uh, the program, it was funded through MAF and it provides. It it's really to go toward improving mental health and through a one-on-one coaching experience for students. So if anyone has follow-up questions, I'm happy to answer those afterwards. I just wanted to keep it brief since uh, it's getting late.
Julie.
So I think that empower you thing is through the county, right?
Yes.
I'm pretty sure.
But so they can, it is an outsour, it is outsourced. I I can't say for sure that it's the county that provides it, but it is an outsourced program.
Cause I believe that the person who does power up through community ed also shared information about that. And so. It's exciting to have another resource for the mental health.
It is.
So is there a place, did you say that we can access the new math flow chart? You think that's on the high school website or?
I don't know if it's posted. It was in our meeting notes, so I can send, I'll send it to Laura and ask her to send it to the board.
Okay, that'd be great. I'd like, I'm, I'm interested in seeing that, so.
Yes.
But it was. Maybe I shouldn't ask the question. Was there any talk about changing the high school schedule?
I'm sure there wasn't anything in the curriculum committee.
You can just cut me off, say Julie.
That is a process. I mean, that's our next, if you recall, we started down that path right before we went into the pandemic. So something, it, both of our secondary schedules, we identified that is um, something we wanted to address. And so that will be a process we. We initiate soon.
Okay.
Thank you, Barb. And it was, actually, it was mentioned, Julie, as something, somebody said they would like to see, but we did not elaborate on it.
Okay, thank you.
Tony.
I just wanted to comment with the updates. It's great to see that with some of the offerings. They're making changes that make it more inclusive, that more students have chances to be exposed to various things. And I, I was lucky enough to. I've been part of the curriculum advisory committee for many years and sat in with Stacy. And um, another change that I I thought was really impressive was. How they're adapting the chemistry into two semesters, so the math requirements not as extensive for the first semester too, just on that. Inclusive inclusivity component of how they're looking at curriculum. So thanks, Stacy, for a wonderful update.
All right, is that it for board updates? Superintendent's report.
I will make this brief too, because I, you've heard a lot from me, but I'm, I'm going to just once again. just thank some people, our teachers who, you know, who have been at it all year long with changing what they're doing to meet the needs of kids during this time. So I'm really thankful for what they've done. Our students have been, have been leaders in a lot of the work. You know, Ismail, I, I've really appreciated having you on the board. And as someone who's, who's willing to just speak up and to really, you said at the beginning, when I first met you about a year ago, virtually it was, but you told me you were going to be the, the voice for the students. And you've, you've been consistent in that all year long and really stepping up and, and sharing what's on your mind and what you've learned from your peers. And so I'm really thankful for that. And we have a number of student leaders out there who have been doing a lot of work to, to try and reimagine what things can look like for the classroom and for events and for gatherings with, with other students. And so we've just seen leadership come from all areas this year. Just again, doing everything we can to support students during this time. And I know that our, our staff really want to be champions for the, the kids in front of them and are, they continue to be. They, they're, they're constantly thinking of what the students need in, in thinking about all these transitions that we've had this year. So I'm, I'm really thankful for, for all that's, that's been happening and will continue to happen to support students. I, I want to also just, you know, our, our building staff doesn't always, that support staff custodians don't always get, get that shout out as well. But I'll tell you that our custodians, I can think of just really had to do things really differently this year to support the health and wellness and just been, have been super flexible in the ways they're doing their, their work this year as well. So, so there's just, there are just so many people who have been hard at work to be able to pull off where, where we are today. And so I just really want to thank, thank everyone, you know, for, for what they're doing. Our paraprofessionals have really stepped up and learned a lot of new technology skills so that they can support kids. It's just on and on, all the, the people who have been part of this. And then I also want to give a shout out to our school board. It is School Board Recognition Week. And so thanks for all that you've been doing to, you know, to work through all of the different changes. Take responsibility for really thinking hard about what we need to do as a district to support our, our kids and families. And so thanks for, for everything that we've done and, and we'll continue to do this. It's not really meant to be a sign off. I just really want to make sure that we, that I acknowledge, acknowledge people who have been, who have been all in this year, working, working together to, to move things forward. So, so thank you for that. And I think you've, like I've said, you've, you've heard plenty from me today. So I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. That is the end of the items on the agenda. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Tony. Moved by Tony, seconded by Stacy. Roll call vote, Julie.
Kevin Donovan.
Aye.
Julie McGraw.
Aye.
Kelly Regan.
Aye.
Stacy Stout.
Aye.
Tony Vassouni.
Aye.
And Lucy Payne.
The chair's aye, motion carries. Thank you for sticking with us so long tonight and we are adjourned.
Thanks.